Special meeting in the board of selectmen Tuesday, November twenty first. Twenty twenty-three at three P M. First item is the fire truck bond.
So I took bids this morning on for the fire truck. I received three bids. The first one was Greenfield Cooperative Bank, four point eight eight. With the net interest cost of four point eight zero three. Oppenheimer, four point eight seven five with a net interest cost of four point eight four nine. UniBank for savings, five point two five with a net interest cost of five point one seven three. So it's a short term borrowing for one year. The interest that we'll have to pay after that one year is forty-one thousand, sixty-four seventy-eight. Also do a pay down of the principal, but. I'll need to talk to finance. Talk about how much.
We had previously. Planned on about a hundred and two thousand a year total payment.
Okay.
So if you've got forty-one an inch, in the plan was to have a sixty thousand dollars towards principal the first year, so.
Okay.
Using your interest rate, I think we used three and a half when we actually ran the calculation, but that was back almost a year ago now. That they went up as we talked in the annual town meeting, we expected interest rates would continue to rise. So this is. An estimate, if you remember how we presented it to the group, this is our best estimate where we're at today. So I think this is right in line with where we would have thought it to be.
When is the first payment? Is it in the twenty-three, twenty-four year or is it in the twenty-four, twenty-five year?
One year from today.
Okay, so we would budget it in the next fiscal year.
And we do have a green light letter. I know you were questioning that. We have the green light letter saying how you can borrow from bond council. And basically, I just need the board to vote on the borrowing and sign the paperwork. This. Four pages to sign.
Do we have any idea what this loan is going to cost the taxpayer? When we said that it would be approximately, was it a hundred dollars per three hundred thousand?
We did at the time, Aaron, I don't, I mean, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was like a thirty-five cent per thousand increase. So this is probably Wendy, I mean, help me out here thirty-eight, forty cents because we use three and a half percent. So it's, you know, so this. Again, it's going to be a little higher, but we can calculate it. I mean, it's not that hard.
Not significantly higher.
Um. Not enough where I think it would be an issue, Aaron. I mean, it's, it's going to be. The difference of thirty or forty dollars per home on, again, we use a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar average house price, which was the average or almost exactly the average in the town. Based on the appraisals across the board. So I think, again. It's, it's within the range we expected and I actually, I feel good because when we spoke about it at the town meeting, you know, I'm repeating myself, we made a strong point of. This is our best estimate, Tim, if you remember, that we can give you based on the economics, we actually borrow the money. And everyone recognized that interest rates had gone from almost nothing. Three years ago to, you know, over eight percent or getting close to eight percent at the time we had the meeting.
And there's a chance that, I mean, as the economy seems to be settling down, that this interest rate next year.
Interest rates are going down.
Are going to go down versus getting in a five-year loan today, we may actually pay a little bit less in the long run.
I can only tell you from the real estate end, the interest rates in the past month have come down. Real estate will continue.
Right, and I think you've got a pretty good chance the Fed will. Start to do some minor increases in the second half of next year, I guess. It's just an opinion, I realize, but I mean, just everything that's going on. When you're seeing all the retail reports that are coming out right now. Consumers are starting to hit their maximum on their credits and starting to not borrow. I mean, there's a lot of things going on. They're going to slow down the economy probably next year a little bit. The interest rates should, should come, should work, should work to our favor.
Right, so the town meeting approved eight hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, the thing I just got right now, not equipment, but the truck itself. I actually, just as I drive up, they have somebody new, an updated invoice. The truck alone, again, this is just truck, eight eleven two oh six. For the truck, yeah, there's equipment, another hundred grand equipment. So I'm going to be. Out of the total amount. I'm hoping to be twenty to twenty-five grand under what I thought because I'm reusing some old equipment and getting some stuff given to us and stuff like that.
The equipment hundred grand, that was.
That was coming, I'm sorry.
Stabilization.
That was stabilization.
That's not bond.
Now, I've noticed, Tim, you have spent some of that, look like.
Yeah, I spent, I got a lot of the equipment's already in.
Okay.
There is, there is more also on the bond too. So this eight, eight eleven is on the bond. And then there's the radios on the bond also.
Okay.
How about to the radios?
I don't have that one in front of me. I wanted to say they were like forty.
So it's going to be very close.
Follow me that and then we can, again, depending how you guys want, we can. I don't know how you break it up. I just kind of broke up the different. Invoices that lined up. I mean, I can pay half some of that of equipment. I don't know how we have, I don't have that final bill yet because they haven't come in yet.
We're, we're gonna take eight fifty.
We're taking eight fifty.
We're covered.
Okay.
Yep, so you're covered. And when you know what the final amount is for next year, you know, we'll do the pay, we'll apply the pay down and we'll only borrow what we need.
Okay.
Because by then we'll know what all the expenses are.
And I'm doing, like, so everything I can to keep it below, using what old equipment we can and, you know, taking stuff off the old truck.
Twenty-five thousand under the nine fifty total.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
As long as you're under the nine fifty in total.
Oh, definitely.
We're in compliance, I think, with everything we, we was approved by the town. We just can't go over that.
No, my goal is to keep as low as, low as possible.
So because I'm brand new to this, does this become due at the end of the one year or is it automatic?
No, it becomes due. And if we wanted to borrow at short term again, we would borrow for another year. Or if we wanted to do it long term, then we're going to borrow for.
Did this bank offer an option to roll it into a long term after the year?
No.
They did not, okay. I just, no, I just was wondering if they might have thrown a carrot out there if you're willing to pay some higher interest rate because they may be thinking rates are coming down also and they may want to lock you in, you never know.
You were thinking, but no. As we go into next year, we want a longer term. Does this town have to be bonded? Do we need a?
A bond rating?
Bond rating.
Uh, we will work on a bond rating. You don't have to, but it helps. So now that we have a couple audits under our bill then.
What I'm thinking is. We're at Y twenty-five, we should do the third audit because we got twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three is complete. So they can audit it. And we get our three solid years.
Good idea.
Bond the town. Because we have other projects down the line. We're going to need that.
And we've discussed doing the audits every other year or every third year at the most. So every other year is. Practical, I mean, every year, I mean, the town, the state recommends every year, but then they have a lot of. Languages says if you're a small town, you've got some, some leeway there. So every other year, every third year is fine.
We're looking at. Major renovation here or something we're going to need.
We would support the audit, definitely.
But do a shirt at the special, do a. An article to fund it in January. So that we move it along. I mean, is there harm in doing a back-to-back?
We can do the audit right away.
Yeah. So there's no issue when we try to come to the end of this one?
Yeah, that'll be done. But there's a cost to that also, isn't there, for the bond rating?
Yes, so if we do it along with the, the borrowing, then we would do. We would have them pay some interest upfront and that would pay for the costs associated it so that we don't have to budget for it.
Oh, okay.
It's largely.
How would you do that? I mean, quite, you said you prepaid some interest.
Yes, so like on this, they call it premium.
Okay.
So on this borrowing, we, we actually called for six hundred and fifty dollars worth of premium. So they're paying that upfront for us. And that's how we're paying the bill for doing the borrowing because I don't know if it's in, I'm guessing it's not in the budget. But to do something like that, it might be eight or ten thousand dollars. Definitely don't have a line item for that. So we would ask for premium when we do the borrowing and that would pay for the.
Okay.
Okay. For the application for a bond?
It, it would pay all the costs associated with. The rating that went along with the bond.
You can get a rating at the same time that you apply for the.
Yeah, we'll do it early enough because we know what the date is that a couple of months prior was not working on.
That would set us up for any.
Future.
Future construction we need to do or anything like that.
And the bond, the bond rating agency like Moody's or around standards and course, they might even come here. And actually go for a ride around the town, ask you about demographics, you know, see how you operate and all that stuff before they give you a rating.
Yeah.
We'll show them the downtown.
Yeah. Show them the band at the center.
So four point eight?
Four point eight eight.
And that was the lowest percentage?
Yep.
It's better than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, I was thinking six. Do you need a motion? Sign, right?
Yes.
Make a motion assignment bond at four point eight.
Exactly.
Off you go.
Aye.
Floyd Martin.
Just one. You crying, Tim?
I'm trying to see the salesman right now saying, don't sell anybody else. Literally sending it.
Also save the money.
You can even watch it at some point.
Yeah, you can watch it because there is a line of people standing out checks for this one. Thank you. No, I do thank the board and the FinCon for the support. So this is going to be that long, last time I need something for long afterward, I've got.
And the long-term bond, would that be five years? What was it?
They originally agreed to ten years, so we'd do it for nine.
Yeah, we set up two ten, so yeah.
Right.
Can I ask the board a quick question in regards to audit? Should I contact the same firm that we use for the last two years, Tony Rizzelli? I know Lori had suggested another, which I have written down at my desk. So just wanted to, I can get quotes from both and come back to the board or.
I would go with Rizzelli, this would be the third.
Consecutive.
Third one, then next year we can.
Do we have an estimate of what their last?
Fifteen, so we did thirty because it was two years.
Yeah.
Oh, so they did two years at the same time?
Yeah. They did twenty-one and twenty-two.
When was the previous one before that?
Eighteen.
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 Two thousand and seven or six, yeah. They, they, they just, everyone just sort of dropped the idea of doing one. There was some. Issues you heard talked about with the one and that, so it was sort of like, it's a hot plate, stay away from it instead of trying to correct the issues.
Right.
I think we worked hard to correct some of the issues.
Yeah, the last report was pretty good.
Very good compared to the, the one we had, yeah.
So you'll do a request, an article request?
Yeah, we're doing article.
I'll contact Tony Rizzelli tomorrow and get a quote for one-year audit for twenty twenty-three and then. We put it on an article.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We get a copy too for the finance, just so I go over what the guys thinks.
Um, no, new business. I just wanted to inform the board that we put out the toys for tots out in the lobby. A couple of the Marines came to see if we would be interested in having the town hall be a drop-off center. Nice opportunity for Ocam to give back or anyone for that matter, but on there, there's also. The aspect of donating a toy has to be new, unwrapped. It can be dropped off or you can make a monetary donation on the website. Or for anyone in need, there's also a link or a tab to click for if you're requested a toy. So covers many areas and figured why not? I've asked Tim and I'm going to send it to Fred. Just to share, Sam is also in collaboration with it. She will collect toys over there as well, just for different hours. And hopefully we have something to give back.
We want to mention the grant. The chief police one.
Yeah, we can mention it. Fred was able to get. Forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Radios. Upgraded tasers. The cameras.
Body cams, that's awesome.
More than like.
You applied for it.
Yeah, he told us we talked about it.
I mean, like larger cities got thirty thousand and got the, like the max.
We got one of the highest awards.
Now, did our grant company help with that?
Yes.
Good to recognize.
Yeah, capital strategic solution.
Wrote the grants.
That's awesome. Congratulations, guys.
Just. Told me this morning, graduated yesterday man school. Doing that right along, so. Certified as a chief now.
Nice.
Good for him.
That's good.
Yeah.
Any old business?
Um, I plan on doing. Two volunteer days the week after Christmas or the week of Christmas. Probably a Friday and a Saturday upstairs. And the Scout BSA troop one forty-four in Ocam has volunteered to help with that. So they can get, you know, credit. And also with the school, you know, it's a graduation requirement to do volunteering and so honestly. Lifting, carrying, maybe bringing to the second floor to at least place things and then sort it. Looking at those tables. But we'll put all that stuff on. Because there are no tables up there, upstairs probably.
These are falling apart.
Maybe we use the stage.
Yeah, I would trust, I mean, you can tell. Because I did get a quote from Republic to see how much it would cost to get rid of these tables and it's thirty-four dollars and fifty cents per table. I think we have eight, so it's close to two hundred and seventy-seven dollars or so, something like that.
Fire station, I'll cut them off.
Did volunteer to said that.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
And just to piggyback off what Aaron said, Parks and Rec, a couple of the US members came up on Saturday morning and. Did a huge cleanup of the Parks and Rec section, made a huge, you did that. And I loaded the rest of the bags today because I knew Republic was coming, so I'm like, it was a wipeout. So just kind of getting that ball rolling.
Um, and just kind of to start thinking about, I know. So the Cub Scout pack. Historically has used the Lions Club storage container, which I don't know who owns it. It's on town property. It's been there for a long time. It basically has no roof. It's, it's rotted, so all precipitation goes inside of it. But they went down there on Saturday, found a huge bin of syringes. You know, somebody came to the Born of Health Recycling Day, we took cans that day, they probably figured, oh, this is where we drop them off. Fortunately, Ani, who's involved with the Scouts was there. She called me, I came and grabbed this whole bin, filled up ours, so it is full. If they happen to show up, even though they haven't been called, it's ready to go. And, but they are wondering. What will happen to that thing? But it is, it probably needs to be disposed of. So. I think Mr. LaBarre is probably going to come in and ask about that. But they clean the entire area. It's never looked so good. Because there was trash behind that shed. I remember when I took a hike through that trail there behind there, there was trash blowing into there. From the highway area behind police station and it's all been picked up. They, they cleaned the entire area. So that Boy Scouts now are managing the bottles and cans. That I can think of.
We can talk more about this at the regular meeting, but I'm. Thinking we should, the annual this year. We really need to have some solid. Numbers for the townspeople on either renovating this building or building another one. Coming up on three years of. Back and forth with this. We have an idea, it's like five million to redo this and eight million for the new one, so.
Which doesn't provide parking or?
We would have to buy land somewhere. It's just. I was also thinking of maybe having a. Question. Put on. The town meeting. And get a feel from the people on which way they want to go. They want to see money invested here or do they want a new one or?
Yeah.
We can sit here all day and talk about it, but it's, it's the people that are paying for it.
Yeah, it could be, would you like a senior center part of it, a police station part of it?
The new one would have both of those and.
This is really limited.
You know, there's, there's not much we can do here but go up.
Right.
And still we're going to have problems with septic.
Oh, yeah, well.
The well.
Yeah.
Right over there.
Yeah.
You're adding more rooms here.
And I think we really need to look at disconnecting. The shared use.
I don't understand how we're doing that.
It goes back to.
A hundred years.
But if something happened, it's like, okay, you're going to split the cost, like, are they prepared for that?
Right, right. So. I know the committee has looked at. The police station is now, that land up there, combined town hall and police senior center. You know, be a bad idea.
There's a lot of land behind that, you know, that's. I guess it's the school.
Yeah.
Technically, it's the school, but it's a lot of land back there.
Yeah.
And it goes to your road, right?
Yeah.
Right backs up.
You know, the challenge, you think, that everyone's going to look at is everyone loves this building, but you are never going to have what the town needs if you try to make. This building work. I mean, that's like trying to fit what's round peg in a square hole. And this building's just past its time of usefulness. It's a nice looking building from the outside, but from what the town's going to need five and 10 years down the road, Dawn and Aaron. Spending more money on this building, I, financially, I just don't think it makes a lot of good economic sense. I mean, you get everything you want with the new facility. No matter what you have here, it's not going to give you everything you want and there's always going to be something trying to wedge in or do something more, do something different.
I mean, I looked, I was downstairs when I brought the needles and I looked at the furnace. It's like, I can't believe that thing is still running.
Idris McDonald can't believe it either.
Yeah.
He's, he said, when that goes, that's, that's fifty-five grand.
Yeah. So, I mean, and then I, I happened to go down a stairwell over here thinking, oh, I've never seen the women's room.
Oh, yeah.
And I was like, oh, that's not a women's room, that's some old toilets from when it was the school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is, you can actually feel the air.
That was like, I think, like the teacher's lounge, that dark.
It's scary.
Yeah.
The stories.
Yeah.
Yeah, fixing this building would just be, it'll never, it'll never be what you want it to be.
Yeah.
Unless someone's just so determined, we have to have the historical structure.
What would be nice is if the architect could take. Structure of this. Underwater building. You know, that's what I did building my house.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea.
An old salt box and copied it. Do the same thing here.
I'm laughing only because I'm thinking what Boston did when they built City Hall. I'm just building in the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I definitely think that's. I think that people probably have no idea what it's actually like to. Work here, do business here. And if they saw the police station, they'd be like, I can't believe they're managing there.
Yeah, they have no, well, the prison.
Yeah, we have to pay.
You've got to pay Spencer.
Yeah.
Well, the state police, but they have two cells. They have a phone, they have their own people.
Yeah.
Suppose they could take them to West House Correction. It is an option.
We're taking our one.
We got one cruiser, they're west Boylston, taking an hour and a half of processing up there and. You know, it just. It's so much easier if they had their own lock up here, they can get bailed from here. The person doesn't have to leave town, you know, just.
And potentially other towns could. Pay us to.
Well, no entry needed to hold somebody that can pay us, yeah.
But with the Council on Aging, Senior Center really coming alive.
Yeah.
More with more people active. You know, they're moving this room around, we got the elections, we're moving around. It's just. A lot of work with a very small group of people having to. Set things up.
And once you renovated, Aaron, you'd still be doing that, probably. I mean, just because you've still got the same square footage.
Yeah.
The same, right, the same footprint, same size.
There was a thought of buying the land back here. Back there with. Your parking.
Yeah, yeah.
All that, so you're still in the center of town, but you have to buy that. We own that.
So you've already got the land. I mean, why make it more expensive for the town?
Right. I think that's an article that should go on for discussion. Which way do you want us to go?
I mean, and it wouldn't even necessarily, well, you've already got that committee, but maybe that committee could start doing some. Forums to understand where we're at. Because I think many people just have no idea.
Oh, I, I agree.
Yeah.
What was the question on the warrant? How would that read?
It would have to show the estimated cost of both. And let the people decide which way do you want to go. And that's, that's not guaranteeing the funding. That's a whole different process. But at least the committee would know which way to go.
And I think.
Minus election and all that stuff.
You need to be careful whoever writes it doesn't have a biased opinion.
Well, council will write it.
Somebody would probably write, well, okay, then it would probably come from YouTube, I guess, with the draft. If somebody's going to write the draft. And there are certainly some people that want to, are hardcore, we have to renovate this building, we don't want to give it up.
Right.
You don't want to slant it in such a way. I think you've got to spell out, here's the benefits of both.
Right.
I'm sure there's people on each of them that probably, there's probably somebody that doesn't think we should do anything. And then there's probably somebody who thinks we should.
It's more than just here, there, right, it's do nothing.
Yeah.
And then whether this is a good idea or not, what always comes up is using the school.
Yep.
It does.
It always comes up. So that's why I'm thinking, you know, it's a multiple choice, but it. Always comes up, so that's why I'm thinking, you know, it's a multiple choice, but it. Gotta make sure you cover all of that, I think.
Yeah.
But the committee had, hopefully has spent time narrowing down the, the, the best options, even if it's three.
They did give a speech at the last town meeting on that, so.
Okay.
I don't know, it didn't seem like there was a conclusion, though.
There was not.
Right.
It was just sort of informational.
Yeah, it was informational, wasn't, wasn't directing the body.
It was just, here's what we know so far, you know, so they need to, and, and, and again, town people should decide, not the committee.
Oh, absolutely.
Set and done.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying, if the committee writes it, and that was all that was done, I would be concerned, it would be biased one way or another, based on personalities upon the committee somewhere, more dominant than others.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Public session, anybody have a public session?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, one, one comment, Merville will have, we should have the budget outline and everything for you, as soon as Lori gets the. November numbers to us, Suzanne is still working with Cory, and it seems they are getting to a point where Cory will probably be able to run the same spreadsheets that Suzanne was running. So have the three-year history and everything for you guys to distribute to all the department heads.
Suzanne decides to come back on FinCon, are we making that appointment temporarily, or is?
We would have to make it temporarily, the, the way the, uh, bylaws read is, the FinCon appoints its members for the interim period. And then at the town meeting, the moderator has to actually do an official swearing-in.
Okay.
Um, so when we've appointed anyone so far in the past, they still have to, you know, get with the town clerk and everything, and, and do all those things. But they're all, their, their term is only until the next town meeting, and then the moderator, with support of the selectmen, has to actually make that final appointment.
Okay.
And she has expressed coming back, but she hasn't got to that point yet with all the things going on in her family situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other viable candidates?
We had, uh, Steve had a gentleman by the name of Nick, and I never got his last name.
Brooks.
Okay, he's, I, I, I had, gave Steve the papers, I haven't filled this out, it's the same one that you've given us in the past from the selectmen that you use for anyone that wants to volunteer. Um, he seemed interested, um, I got the impression it would probably be after Thanksgiving before he decided, uh, he is a, uh, state police officer in the town. Or in, in the state, um, younger gentleman, seemed like a, a good guy, I mean, that's all I can say with the five minutes on the, on the video.
Yeah, I just know him from kids, like, his kids or stepkids and my, I mean, I know him casually, yeah, yeah.
Seemed like, again, a, a potential candidate, not much of a financial background, he was open with that, he said, I'm interested in helping the town.
He's a taxpayer, so he certainly understands that.
We can, you know, we can, we can walk you through it, so, so he did express an interest, Aaron, and. I, again, I fully expected in December, we'll hear something from him, the way it sounded.
Your motion to adjourn?
Uh, will you adjourn?
Second, Paul Paver?
Aye.